For the last 10 years of my career, I've spent my focus on leadership and leadership development. And in leadership, one of the most critical skills that is also a critical skill in public service is that of communication. Communication is one of my greatest skills. Communication is vital in public service. And I firmly believe that if there was actually clear communication at all levels of politics, the number of conflicts will be reduced throughout the world. And yet, we're talking about Riverdale. I, as a city council member, would help bring greater communication. Not so much from my ability to speak, but from my ability to listen and to consider alternative points of view on the city council, as well as considering the points of view and the needs of the citizens. It was commented by the gentleman earlier in the public comment, how city council and any public representatives, we are just that, public representatives. And if we can't get out and talk to the people and understand what their concerns are and their needs are and represent them, then we're failing. But if we can come together and find opportunities to get public comment, to solicit those interests and then discuss them and come to a conclusion that is well thought out, rather than any way representing personal or selfish reasoning or bias, that will be a far better result if we can take that opportunity to debate, consider, and truly have a conversation and communicate. I value and look forward to your questions and comments and look forward to forging the path for those who are after me.
Thanks. Who's first?
Well, I think we'll let each go.
Yeah. Yeah.
So many of you may remember me from coming to one of the budget meetings. And I know one of the questions you guys are going to ask is, why didn't I run in the last election? And I'll answer that question after you guys ask that. But during my introduction, I want you guys to know that I feel like the stars have aligned. I feel like I bring a sense of unity. I feel like I can relate with the young and the old. I feel like I have a great interest in a city that I've grown to love. I came, me and my wife, we moved into the trailer court and six years ago. And we absolutely loved it. We loved it enough that we built in Riverdale as well and in the Coleman Farms. And so I feel like I am able to, because I live here and I enjoyed it so much, I feel like I need to give back. I come from Clinton, as you all may know, is a very well, not well-known, but it's a very, it's a city that's growing fast, faster and faster. And so I've seen the difficulties they've had to work with. And I've also worked with some of their city councilmen that they currently have now. But I look forward to just bringing thoughts and insight to you. I look forward to working with aside you. And I also look at the people running. And I know that this next election period is going to be one that is going to continue to help produce good results for Riverdale regardless of the outcome tonight. And so that's what I have. And so I'll wait for the questions.
Thank you.
I'm Blair Jones. I've lived here for a little over 66 years. I served on the planning commission for 15 years, a little over. And retired from Hill Air Force Base after 32 years. Any questions?
Yeah. Is this appropriate time to ask questions or not? Or is this just introduction?
This is just introduction. We'll get you some questions in a minute. All right. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Ken Anderson. A lot of you I've known through the years here in the city. I was born and raised here. Short of the two-year service for the LDS church, anything outside when we were first married, I've lived my full life here. Had the opportunity of seeing a lot of growth and a lot of change. At one point when I was younger, as I listed in my application, at one point I heard the phrase, "Riverdale is the future hub of Weber County." And I think that we have truly arrived and that we are thus the hub of Weber County. As such, we're a small, mighty, little, compact group of citizens and businesses that the county has come to rely on. And so that becomes a particular challenge as to how we direct that, how we continue to maintain good neighborhoods for families to be raised in. I have so many wonderful memories of Riverdale and the people that I've associated with and grown up with. And now I've raised my families with. At this stage in my life, I'm now retired. And so I have a lot more time that I can devote to serving. And I'm looking forward to having that opportunity. If not now, later, whenever. I enjoy serving on the planning commission. And I want to make certain that the citizens today have the same wonderful memories that I have because it's been a community that's been inclusive, has been fair-minded, and represents all facets. Businesses are citizens here in the community. And we need to, they have an appropriate place at the table, but the citizens foremost. We need to make certain that we're meeting their needs, that we're listening. In my occupation, I worked with a number of people, supervised a lot of people and who would train and they would leave, but they would always come back. I had numerous people that would come back because of the culture that we created. And I feel like that we can accomplish that here within the city. I've seen that with the staff and the level of service that they give for our citizens. They are exceptional. And we have some incredibly talented people. And I want to see that continue for our citizens. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Haas. I have lived here in Riverdale since 1996, I believe, is when we moved in. We've lived in three different neighborhoods in the community and found great joy in living here. I, like, like James mentioned, it's sad that we have to, that we're here under this situation with Councilor Hilton passing away. But things do happen and we continue to move on. I believe that I could serve well in the position of a, as councillor. And I have served on the council before and understand, have a great understanding of how the city works. While I was on the council, the first time was the beginning of the sales tax redistribution method. And we worked through that. And I was thrilled to be on the council at the time, to have the opportunity to, to serve the citizens and try to do the things that would be best in, in the interests of the citizens and also the, the members of the broader community. I think that I have a great understanding of the sales tax thing. Sales taxes run the city. And a lot of times we think less of the sales tax being our citizens' money because a lot of that doesn't come from the residents of Riverdale. We end up, end up using that to fund the city. But government doesn't generate its own income. Government takes its money from the citizens. And every dime that is spent needs to be looked at, examined. And we need to make sure that we're doing the best for our citizens. And I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, or I know that we are all in agreement that this is not how, how we wanted this to happen, especially with Steve's passing. I'm grateful for everything that I learned from him. I, his daughters talked about the crust. I would always tell, ask Steve to tell me more, more, and more. And I'm sure all of you can attest to that if you've ever been under attack with my questioning. I, I learned so much on the council. There's no doubt about it, the two years that I was on it. I feel like as a resident of Riverdale, you're only, and obviously by choice or exposure, I don't know, you're only limited to so much understanding. And again, a lot of it, could I have known more if I had done more research, probably. But when you're on the council, it's a whole new level, as I'm sure all of you know and as you're learning, of just understanding of stuff. And that is my, I would say, well, one of my greatest attributes is that I love learning. There's no doubt about it. I've obviously learned a lot in school, but outside of school, I always love learning. And I love asking questions and just learning as much as I can. So I definitely bring that to the table. I'm willing to learn. I want to understand. I want to fulfill the position, any position I have, to the greatest of my ability. I am a communicator as well. I obviously have been through schooling for that. But outside of that, ever since I was young, I've loved to talk to people. I've loved to get to know where they're coming from or just to connect with them. I love connecting with people in general. And I know that that's an attribute that I bring as well, not only to represent the residents of Riverdale, who I know that we are all entrusted with that responsibility to do. And I'm grateful to be able to do that and communicate with them and understand their needs better. And then communicate that to, as, as a council member, to communicate that as well. And just to kind of be that instrument of translating it and carrying it into the decisions that we make here. So I do love this city. I haven't been here as long as, as everyone else or as some other people might have been. But my time here, I've loved it. I'm grateful for this, the place we live. I want to stay here. I want to continue raising my family here and being a part of this community. And yeah, I think that's, I think that's it. I'm sure there's going to be more to say, no doubt about it. But thank you so much for your time.
Okay, Ms. Baragoni, what's next?
So do you all have questions that you want to ask? I know most of them, not everybody. So what we'll do, we'll go in the same order and we'll just start down there. You could be first.
Will it rotate at all or will I get all of the questions first so that I answer it right?
No, he gets the first question and then that question goes to, oh, Sam.
Okay.
And then Matt will get the second question.
Statute. Yeah, that's what you just. One and then rotate. So Matt would get question two and then you would be the last one to get question two.
Perfect. Thank you.
So my question is, we have, we call it the cliff in 2030, when the tax issue that Stacy Haas talked about kind of changes. As we were talking about the council, one of the things about this council, starting in 2024 to 2028, timeframe is this, this council, this, this group has to kind of get, for lack of a better term, mean, aggressive, sharpener pencil kind of thing. Are you willing to do that? And do you have any ideas of how we would do that?
Yes, I'd be happy to get mean, if you will. I will be frank, the cliff is vernacular that I'm not familiar with as far as 2030 goes. That doesn't mean that I'm not fully dedicated to finding out everything I can, considering that it's a significant issue. As far as making hard decisions, I believe hard decisions are found through significant conversation, debate, healthy debate, and vetting all possible considerations at the best possible outcome for the city, for the citizens. And without that debate, you can't come to the best possible decision. If there's just a handful of opportunities or options and they're driven by certain agenda, then that will leave the citizens and the community off worse. But I, first and foremost, I would do all I can to learn more and learn from those who are currently involved so that I could be a part of that decision-making process and do all I could to also find out what the citizens' needs and interests is in that certain situation. Thanks. Thank you.
Councilman Arnold, to answer your question, I feel like it all starts with the culture. And I feel like that culture is preceded by the people I'm looking at right now and led by, by our mayor right here. And so as he, as he guys this shift, I feel like that's what, as a councillor or a person on the city council, I, yes, I'm more than willing to go to bat and do whatever we would need to do to be able to make sure that everyone is being held accountable. But I also do feel like in order for that accountability to happen, a culture does need to be set. And I feel like Mayor Mitchell has set a phenomenal culture in his time in being mayor. And I know that it will continue on. But it all starts with, you know, the willing to work as a city council member to be able to make that water get to the end of the row. And so it doesn't do any good to get the guidance from him and not go to bat and go to work. As far as the tax question, it's, it's an ongoing issue. You know, taxes, we may not know, right now inflation is crazy. It's an uncertain time. But I do feel like with the right people and conversing it together, the right decisions can be made and under the direction of Mayor Mitchell. So that's what I would say to that.
Thank you.
First off, I'm only planning on at the time doing the two-year term. So as far as, you know, in 2030, the cliff, as you call it. But I don't have a problem with, you know, taxes. But I think at the same time, we need to keep in mind, not everybody's the higher income. We have some citizens that, you know, the tax increase can affect them a lot. And so I think if we do have to go into raising taxes and, you know, something's going to affect some of the lower-income people, we need to keep that in mind too. So I don't have a problem with it, but I think, you know, it would have to be hashed out so that it's not going to cause some citizens to have to sell their houses and move out of the city just because they can't afford the tax increase, because that could happen. So other than that, I don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
How much time do I have? Because in a situation like this, I find that a lot of people often, and are we familiar with the term NMB and whiff them, what's in it for me, not in my backyard? A lot of times, people's perspectives are based on their sole point of view. And they don't see the broad picture. I've viewed and I've seen what Riverdale has done. We used to be number eight, as far as 13 communities in Weber County. We used to be number eight as far as city taxes, property taxes. We're now number six. We're not the highest, which is South Ogden. But if you look at that list, some things that were interesting about that list, you've got South Ogden, Ogden, North Ogden, Roy. And all of those are more major metropolitan areas within the county. The ones at the bottom, Far West, Harrisville, they don't have a Riverdale road that's running through the middle of town. Yes, we have the tax base that comes in. But this, the council, and I think the council's done a good job of this, they've kept those property taxes low. But there's a principle, a book that I read, and it's understanding the why. And if, if we can communicate well enough with the citizens of our community as to the why we need to raise taxes, it takes a sizable budget. You can't have a hook and ladder fire truck to put out a fire at Home Depot or Target. You've got to have a big piece of equipment. In order to serve the citizens of the community, you need to have a number of police officers. We need to be judicious as to how we spend that money. But at the same time, if the three largest tax producers, income tax producers, Walmart, Target, and Home Depot, if 90% of our time with police is being spent at those entities trying to resolve issues with shoplifting and whatever, then if I've got a citizen over on 4400 that has a problem, if I don't have enough police to attend to them and it takes them four hours before somebody can attend to them, we've got to have sufficient needs. We're a community of size now because of everything that we're involved with. And so we have to be prudent in what we do with how we spend those taxes. We just can't take them at large and not manage that well. But we need to help our citizens understand the why, as to why this is happening. And I think as we do so and we have that conversation, those tough conversations will be satisfied. And hopefully we can have the citizens on board with us.
Thank you.
I decided not to sit far enough back. I knew I was going to be covered. I was on the council when, like I said, SB 27 is what it started out as back in 2004, I believe it was. And interestingly, we were given a seven-year transition period. And the council and the mayor pushed, the city administrator and the city finance director at the time pushed and pushed and with the other cities that were in the same situation. And they managed to get the, the state to give another option for raising taxes. And that had a sunset on it. And I believe that it has been renewed at least once since then. I'm not positive, but there, there has been a cliff ever since 2004. And the council has managed to keep pushing it off and pushing it off and not doing the things that needed to be done to get the, the, the budget in line with what eventually would be happening. I've, you know, I watched it. And at the same time, while I was on the council, they, they pushed for a 50% tax increase that first year. But they also cut the budget by 10%. And the 50% was going to be $400,000 increase in property taxes. And there was a line item for $400,000 that would be going to the capital fund, capital project funds. $400,000 that they were going to basically be putting in the bank. And I, I said, well, I don't understand why you would raise taxes $400,000 if you have $400,000 extra at the end of the year. And I pushed hard and got the, and was disappointed. But we ended up raising the property taxes 25% instead of 50%. But I pushed back against the city administration. And that was the way I am. I think that we have offered, we have ways of getting around to dealing with the, the actual issues. The actual issue is we don't need to spend as much as we spend. And those are the hard questions.
Thank you.
There is no question. Some major decisions have to be made by 2030. I think we're all in agreement with that as well. I feel like especially everything that I've had to learn about all of this was definitely drinking from a fire hose kind of experience for me to just open my mind and my understanding to all of this over the last two years. But I have been drinking. I've been chugging as much as I possibly can to learn the decisions that have to be made. And they're critical. I get it. I 100% understand that. And to kind of go back to the beginning, am I willing to get mean? I will say I am not willing to get mean because that's not my greatest quality or strength. But I am willing to be firm, to be, especially for me, I will stand for what is right, no matter what. There's no doubt about that. I will defend what I know is true and the direction that we need to go, especially as a, as a city approaching that 2030 mark. There's major changes that need to be made and I will stand firm in those. There's major changes that need to be made, and I will stand firm in those. I know that about myself. But I can't say I will get mean. That's just not something that I'm very effective at. But I am effective at being willing to stand for the decisions that need to be made and making the hard decisions that have to be made to set our city up where it needs to be by 2030.
Thank you. So do we want Councilor to ask his second question? Do we want to move on? No, we'll move on. First question. Well, I think that makes sense, too.
Let's do that.
That works okay with your guess, though. I think it's only fair. He shouldn't have to. Pressure. Do you want to go to?
Questions?
Yeah.
All right, let me just read this.
It's the next person. Okay, some of this has already been. It means so.
I see you go down number two. All right, so.
Some of this has already been touched on, but I would like to revisit this. He goes to the end.
Your James, I'm sorry.
Facial hair and the height. Okay. Okay, it's already been touched on somewhat. But have you ever ran for ever ran for or served in an official by appointment, official Riverdale City position? And please describe your service. And what was your biggest takeaway from serving?
No, I have not ran for a current position.
It's run or been appointed or served in a official Riverdale City. Okay, so it covers a lot broader.
Yeah, my my police officer skills and firefighting skills aren't very good, so definitely don't want those. But no, I have not run for any other had had an opportunity to run. Have volunteered and will continue to volunteer regardless of the decision that happens tonight. But it's something that I look forward to as I've only been here, as I mentioned, for the six years. I'm in it for the long haul. I've got a 30-year mortgage on my house, and I'm only on year three. So if you guys do the numbers, we're we're in it, in it to win it. So that's what I would say to that.
Thank you.
I served a little over 15 years on the Planning Commission, and I've served as the chairman and the vice chairman on the Planning Commission. And the takeaway was more of an awareness on the zoning and developments that or are the changes that the developers have to make when they bring their initial plans in and trying to get everything straightened out. So when it comes to city council, you know, everything's in order. That's it.
Thank you.
Can I just say that even though this process is good, I really hate this because I sit back down and I go, oh, wait, and this, and this, and this. So but I won't take up all of your time. However, yes, I have served in different capacities within the city. My wife and I were chairman of the Riverdale Parade back in the 90s. Don't ask me when, but I remember it well because of all of the the fun pulling that together. Presently, since 2020, I've been serving on the Planning Commission. Presently, the vice chair of the Planning Commission. What I've learned, I've had to go through and read and become familiar with zoning ordinances and regulations. At one point, I was a little overzealous at the beginning because I wanted to do a good job. And Mr. Brooks had to rein me in, but that's okay. Because my desire to serve the citizenry of this community is to make sure that I'm prepared. One thing I hold myself to a highest standard on is being prepared. I like to make sure that I don't run into anything headlong without having some good background and some standing as to why a decision is made. Having to speak in extemporaneous situations like this, I've got too many ideas that are trying to come out all at once, and so I may stutter and stammer. I like to take time and sit back and make certain that whatever the decision that I am about to make is something that's well thought out and is fair to everyone involved. So that benefits the city, the citizens, everyone involved, all the stakeholders involved. But learning more about this, the city and the regulations that we have to adhere to, and some I agree with, some I think are a little heavy-handed, not from your stance, but more from the state of Utah as they press different regulations on us. I get frustrated with it, but fortunately, the city's got some talented people that help us work through that. And so I've learned to rely heavily on the professionals that serve here in the city, and they're a great team.
Thank you. I did run for city council in, what was it, 2003 and did win. Served a four-year term on the council. In the middle of the count, my council time, I ran for mayor and was soundly defeated by the incumbent, who was a great mayor. I was then, I then ran again and and did not succeed. One of the things that I would say that I learned about serving on the council is that, and and this kind of goes to the reason that the state makes some of the rules that they do, is that to a great degree, we make the rules. The city council makes the rules within that thing of of the state's requirements. But then, the hard thing is that you have to live by those rules. You might want to do something, but if the rules that you made or the previous councils made indicate that that's not something that you can do, it probably is something you shouldn't do. And unfortunately, I was in a situation where that exact thing happened. And I tried to convince the council that what they were doing was the wrong thing to do. I was unable to convince the council, and they passed the the decision on a four-to-one vote, and we were sued, and we settled because we were going to lose. And it it was frustrating. It was extremely frustrating. But when there are rules, everyone has to follow the rules. The rules are not made just for the people. The rules are made for everyone. Thank you.
So I have ran in the past two elections and was appointed the last election and ran again this election. And obviously, due to unfortunate circumstances, we are, I'm again striving to get the appointed position again to hopefully do a four-year term. We know it's said and done, then having those four years under my belt. As far as the last part of your question, I believe it was, what have we learned?
Your best takeaway, your greatest takeaway.
My greatest takeaway from serving on the council has been to listen first. I feel like sometimes we come in here with kind of, and understandably, with our knowledge and experience and the research we've done on our own, we've already looked at the path plan and gone through everything. I think a lot of us come in here already like feeling like we know where we're where we stand and what the decisions are that we're gonna make or but there's still other input that comes in during the meeting that I feel like has, it's critical we listen to that versus just sticking with kind of this preconceived understanding that we have without that information. So that's been my biggest takeaway is just listen in the moment to those that get up here and speak, whether they're with the city or whether they're residents or, you know, contractors or builders, engineers. Even if we don't agree with the things that they're saying or we don't, it might not necessarily change the decisions that we make. Just listen and and be present in the moment when these decisions are being made. I feel like if we could, if we could all, like, obviously not only here on the council or in the council and in these chambers, but in our lives, just listen first to those that were around and the things that are being said, and then and then speak and then make your decisions. I feel like that's been my biggest takeaway, is to do that in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your question. I'd have three things to say as a response to the question. No, I have not served or been elected to a an official capacity inside of Riverdale government, nor has anybody else before they actually are appointed. And only then can you actually serve in that capacity. So everybody deserves a chance, regardless of whether they've served before. And I do intend to run in the next election, so looking forward to that. And I've been thinking about it for a long time. Circumstances are now that I can. Second thing I'd mention is I have been elected in a separate, a different capacity. I served as a Weaver County delegate in a previous gubernatorial election. And I did learn many things in that experience. First and foremost, I learned the interesting dynamics between politics and people. And I was able to see very clearly what I felt were good efforts and those efforts that were far more about arrogance, self-effacing, or chalking for position. And it sickened me, honestly. And that I think it sickens many of us as we watch different congressional debates, et cetera. And it made me want to be involved more in a more local capacity because I feel that's where real change can happen, is in communities, where people can actually be involved with councils to make real decisions that impact their lives. And the final thing I'd say as far as serving, I serve every day in this community with all my heart and every way I can to the people around me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's Mr. Jones for.
Before you ask a question, I wanted to just withdraw my name.
Okay.
Then we'll start with Mr. Anderson.
Okay. My question is, tell us about a time when you voted on a board or a council or maybe in a work position, if you've never served on either of those, that you regret? And what did you learn from it?
How do I have to think?
We will give you just a little bit extra time because everybody in the audience is thinking right now.
It's okay.
We're not gonna hold you.
If I may, I'm gonna approach this from two sides. One is the decision that we made to move ahead with Leslie's Trailer Park. I didn't regret it, but it was difficult because of the lives of the people that it affected. That was one of the areas that was at the beginning of my opportunity to serve on the Planning Commission. And I think got a little carried away because I live, many of you are familiar with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, of which I'm a member, and the different areas that are designated that are known as wards. This particular, well, Leslie's Trailer Park is part of the ward that I worship in. And so I had spent many hours down there assisting those people trying to repair windows, replace furnaces, and do whatever it took to to take care of their homes and to help them to get by. They were hardscrabble people that were trying to get by. And so having to make that decision, but having to step back and say, a landowner has approached the city and has made this request, is it within their right to make that request? Yes. Is the potential such that people are going to be losing their homes? Yes, because homes can't be, if they're manufactured prior to 1985, they can't be moved, which the majority of those homes were. And so these affected people that I knew personally. It was a hard decision, but based on fact, I had to move forward and take that. I I feel bad about that decision. In my employment, I had another decision that I moved too quickly on. And I reprimanded an individual in front of a group instead of pulling them back aside and trying to coach and encourage and change behavior. I totally regretted that. And I stood in front of the whole group again and said, I made a mistake, and I need to ask all of your, and I apologize to all of you and ask for your forgiveness because I did this wrong, and this was unfair for the other individual. So been down both those roads. Thank you.
When I was getting ready to run again for council, I I was looking at my, what I had done over the four years that I was on the council. And ultimately, I had to say that what most people would have would have looked at as a great triumph was something that ultimately I regretted. And that was the senior center. I'm not saying that the senior center is not a wonderful place. It's a great asset to the community. But the senior center was was paid for by RDA funds. And ultimately, looking back at that, I don't think that was a proper use of of tax funds. That was, it was on the very edge of what was allowed by the law. I don't think that we that we broke the law. But I ultimately, it was probably not something that we should have used those RDA funds for. We should have found another way. If we wanted to build that, we should have found funds in the city budget to be able to build that. That, you know, it is the, just like the parks and recreation tax. And, you know, I I think that parks and recreation are a wonderful thing, that, you know, the things that those funds do are are great. But that's simply elected officials funding. You have to make the hard decisions, you know? If the citizens want that, then raise the taxes and pay for it. If you're not willing to raise the taxes to pay for it, then either you don't believe that the citizens want it or the citizens really don't want it. But if you're going to spend the money, raise the taxes to to spend it. Don't go begging the state to give you more money to help you out with a cliff. Thank you.
Be patient with me for a second while I try to express this. Um, so. I don't have regrets, only lessons because, okay, so this concept was taught to me a long time ago. Um, and of course, just my background in psychology, all that stuff, but regrets keep you stuck in looking back. Lessons keep you present and moving forward. So lessons, and I, and I know maybe you weren't that philosophical with your question in terms of of that kind of complexity to it, but. I I look at times when I wish I had made a different decision as just a lesson of how do I go forward with this? And how do I make better decisions in the future going forward? Right? And so there were several experiences where I had on the council, especially in the very beginning, um. Just the learning process, um, the learning curve for me obviously was very steep, um, being being new to so much of this, but. There was times when I would get home and mulled through stuff in my mind. I'm a huge thinker. So I just start thinking and then I can't sleep because I'm still just thinking and can't turn it off. So. I would, I would wrestle with decisions I did not know enough about. And so that's where the the lesson part comes in for me is I would say. Did I make the best decision from what I knew? Yes, in the moment, but could I have known more? Could I have learned more? Could I have abstained my vote because I did not feel comfortable with the knowledge base I had in that moment to have made that decision? And I feel like that's where I've probably learned the most is that going, I guess I can think of two times. I'm a huge journaler too, just a little disclosure here, but, um, two times in my journal where I I wrote a lot about. Two particular decisions because I was wrestling with not knowing enough. Did I make the best decision from what I knew? Could I have learned more before I felt comfortable making that decision? And there have been times when we have literally tabled the discussion because we have not known enough information. And I've brought up that point several times. I feel like maybe we should table the discussion because we do need to learn more about this. And I, and I feel like that only came from those experiences of wishing I had known more before I made a decision. So. So that's where I'm at on that of just, could I have learned more? And then in the future, um, if if I happen to be appointed in the future, knowing, knowing that and saying. Do I abstain my vote in this? Because I do not feel I know enough information to adequately make this decision going forward. So, but thank you.
Thank you. First, I want to say excellent question and thank you for asking it now instead of when I was first. So that I could take some time to think about it, having not served on a city council or something of that sort. The times when I've been able to be involved in difficult decisions, um, aren't associated with public affairs. But I have been a vice president of a company and as such, I was part of the executive team. And I daily and weekly was involved in debates and. If you would say had a vote in significant decisions regarding the culture of the company, budgets, uh, projects and a number of other different issues. And like Karina mentioned, it's not that I don't regret things. It's I believe in doing a lot of the hard work upfront. So that there isn't a space for regret. And what I mean by hard work upfront is. A lot of hard conversations need to be had early. You do the hard work here. So that you don't do hard work at the end of it when it's too late to make a shift or a pivot. And the times when I did feel any sort of regret is when we didn't give it its due diligence upfront before making that wise decision. Or those times when you do the hard work and you come with the best decision you think you can. And then something changes in the interim and hindsight becomes twenty twenty. And so I would, I'd reiterate, and actually afterward, I'd love to hear from each of you. These types of things and learn from that experience, but I believe in making the hard decisions. With the best informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Patrick. So, um. Yeah, there's obviously five or four now that have spoken, but can, can I ask you to maybe refrain? Uh, rephrase the question so I can make sure I'm answering that correct.
Just look in, um. Tell us about a time when you voted on as a member of a board or a council? Or made a similar type decision in your work that you regret and what you learned from it?
So as I. I've been a part of, um, as a, as a territory manager, we've, uh, at the company I work for. We're always asked to, um, you know, make the decisions on on the fly. Uh, some of those decisions I've made haven't always been the best ones. Um, but it's the, it's in the journey and the learning process on that. And so to answer your question. Um, yes, I've failed, uh, but I have learned a lot and I think that that's what it's all about is being able to be pliable, moldable. And to be able to work together in harmony with the, um. Like I say, again, I keep mentioning Mayor Mitchell's values in core than what he wants to. You know, have us carry out. So that's how I'd say that.
Thank you.
You ready? So for Mr. Rick's questions, we will start with Mr. House.
He started on the last one, because.
Yeah.
Oh, he did.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I know what I'm doing. Except my mic's falling off.
I think my, my question, uh, kind of, kind of follows off Counselor Hanson's a little bit. I I'm interested in in some of the core principles, um, and 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 individual qualities that you use or you rely on. To make decisions where you may not have all the information you, but what's those core, uh, principles that perhaps guide you as you. Make difficult decisions?
Is it right? Is it, uh, fair? And is it going to be, um, a positive thing for those involved? Those are, those are my cores. I, I just want, I want to make sure that, uh, the the decisions that are made are right. They follow all the rules. And like Karina said, if we don't have all the, all the, uh, information that we need. Then maybe we, maybe it needs to be tabled and we need to get more information. And again. Having been on the council, that has happened before me and and unfortunately, you know. Nobody wants to delay, uh, people come before you. They, you don't want to make them come back. But if they, if you don't have all the information, uh, it might be better to delay. Um, but ultimately, is it, is it right? Is it fair? And will it provide a positive outcome? Thank you.
I just want to say that I do start every day with a prayer. Um, I know that. I know that I need it. And so I seek first and foremost to try to. Tap into greater understanding than I will ever possess the capability to have on my own. I, that is one thing about me that. I've come to really appreciate is humbling myself constantly to know that I do not know it all. And who does, right? And I go to the source that I feel does know way more than me, but also knows how to. Instruct me, knows me so personally that it will guide me in just very. Specific ways that it knows I need. And then the flip side of that is I also have come to learn in my life, the principle of opposition. And I know that when. I am striving to make the best decisions, when I am striving to stand for what I feel is right, what I've learned is right, what. I know in my gut is right, um, to make important decisions, I will always face opposition. But it's an indicator to me that I am on that right path. So I'm essentially guided by both the opposition to. Just my most valuable value of my connection to my Father in heaven. But I also feel like what comes with that commitment to him. Are very strong qualities that. I mean, I I don't want to go into like the boy scout qualities of everything, but like honesty, integrity, all of those things come with my firm commitment. To strive to have a strong connection and make decisions based on that connection. And use, use my faith and. Just that. That value, I guess, like you said, but that the values that I hold use those to guide me in making decisions that I make, that makes sense. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Feel like I have a comment every time I come up, but I'm really enjoying this. Actually, I'm enjoying hearing all the responses and I'm enjoying the deep thinking that's going on. I appreciate the question regarding values and those which drive my decisions. And I've put a lot of thought in my life around values and I can name four very quickly, which drive my decisions constantly. First of which is integrity. And my integrity is is paramount in my life. If I don't act in accordance with my integrity, something's wrong. And it will eat at me. And because of that, I I make sure that every decision I make. Is aligned to the integrity I have and the integrity that I feel needs to be represented, um, by those people that. Uh, second is wisdom, um, which is a big difference between wisdom and intelligence. And wisdom, I believe, is the intelligence in action. And it's a matter of understanding, gaining all the correct information possible or as much information as possible from due research. And then making appropriate decisions that will have the best outcome. And the third one is order. I value order in my life and it's very hard. I have four young boys and they provide a lot of chaos. Um, but order to me. Provides structure by which things can happen in the correct way. And you can create order. Um, and I think so much of what you are here for and what much of government is designed to do is to create order. And without that order, chaos reigns and you have a lack of, of good governed body. The last one I would mention is transparency and it goes to talking straight. Um, when decisions are made, make sure that they are made with clarity. Nothing is being withheld. And because if there's, I guess it goes back to the first one, so if there's a lack of transparency, that shows to me a lack of integrity. It shows subterfuge, it shows agenda and instead with a clear, uh, clear transparency. It makes for far better communication, better understanding, which, um, leads to better results. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the record. And in that answering your question, I feel, um. Integrity is at the very top and it it needs to be be there. Um, that integrity, the foundation is nothing, as we all know. And values are are everything. It's what makes or breaks the greatest teams, um. In sports, in life, in politics, in city council. Um, and so the values that I I hold dear to me is, um, is trust, you know? If if I am going to be, um, given the opportunity to be able to vote on something. I need you to trust me that I've done my due diligence in finding and researching and you know that I'm going to vote. For the, for the thing that I know to be right, just like I would trust that you would do the same thing. I feel like in all organizations, if if that trust isn't had and you can't rely on someone to follow through with. The thing that they say that they're going to do, um, really we we start giving it, um, head terms and and nobody really knows what's going on. But if we all trust one another and we're all running in unison in the same direction. Um, like I said, that that Mayor Mitchell guides us in, that's ultimately what, um, what I would say is is my core. Values is is that trust and that, um, integrity and knowing that. When I enter into something, I know full well what what it is that I'm getting into and and you're going to know that I'm going to give it everything I have. So.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, I think you're a bit of a sadist. It looked like you was joyous. Could I please have you rephrase the question again, please?
Yes, essentially what I'm looking for is, uh, what what personal qualities or or individual principles guide you as you make decisions? What core principles do you have?
Thank you. I think that we can all agree that the individuals that have spoken here tonight and that have represented themselves have are highly principled individuals. You boil it down to what are your core values? And what does that define you as an individual? And those things that. Should percolate to the surface every time that you interact one with another? Whether it's here on the council, whether it's with a citizen, um, or wherever that may be. Those principles of honesty and integrity. Are are key. But for me. Trying to understand the perspective from all points of view. So that it's not myopic in one approach. But that examines. Contradictory, contradicting or opposing opinions. So that hopefully you can distill and come to the best conclusion and best decision. Sometimes that means challenging yourself to step outside of what you know to be. Um, fact for you. And examine and look at perspectives of others that are involved that have a stake in what's being decided upon. That for me is probably the greatest challenge is to have that empathy. For those around me so that whatever I choose to do, whatever I decide to do and however I move forward. That it's doing so with respect for the individual. And that something that we can lock arms together and walk away with and be happy and satisfied with. Thank you.
Back to Counselor Arnold and we'll start with.
So my question would be towards what, uh, Rudy Jones talked about. There was an election. You, but the the fourth place finisher was by five votes. What would you say to the eight hundred and forty-four people that voted for that candidate? That the state mandated this type of process? Um, I mean, given we have. Solid candidates, five remaining solid candidates. That what would you tell those eight hundred and forty-four people that voted for that candidate? Choosing someone else, um, rather than going with the electorate?
I would say I I don't have to say much, to be honest. I'm I'm before you right now. Because of the backing that I have received, the comments that or the conversations, honestly, comments, the conversations that I've already had. With those that do support me in this position. And the gratitude that I feel that they support me, I was, I was shocked. At the close results in the election. There's no doubt about it. I never would have anticipated that kind of, um. Battle be- between the three of us, um. And I was. To say humbled is an understatement. I was, I was very grateful and. The reason I am here right now before you asking to be appointed to this position is because. I hold in high regard those that support me in it and those that have voted for me and I stand for those votes. And the votes of those that told me they forgot to turn in their ballots, but. I stand here before you because I want this position. I I want to serve the city of Riverdale on the city council and I. Am humbled and grateful for the experience to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you restate the question, please?
So there was an election that within the last three positions were six votes. And so the last player, the person that came in last was eight hundred and forty-four votes. What would you say to the electorate of those eight hundred and forty-four votes that you feel that you deserve this position more than that? the, the position of those that voted for this person?
Thank you for the question. Thank you for restating it. I'll first say that I was surprised to know that this was the, the process by which a new council member would be elected as well. When I first heard that this was the process, I was, I was shocked. I thought for sure that the next candidate would naturally just step into place because they hadn't taken the time to run and they had votes clearly backing them. So the first thing I would say to those citizens is I'm with you. I'm surprised. That said, this is the process. Whether we agree with it or not, it's the process. And I don't know that I deserve it more than anyone else. I think deserve is an interesting term. I think, I think it's due process. And I'm grateful that it is a process by which more candidates are coming to the forefront. As you well know, there's a small field of, of people running for the office. And we've more than doubled that simply by this process. I mean, to see another six candidates step up, well, five in addition to the existing candidate, is hopeful to me for what is potentially in the future and on future elections. Hopefully those that are here tonight will continue to run and continue to stand up and be active citizens. And so I wouldn't say that I deserve it any more than anybody else does. I don't know that anybody who's elected to office necessarily deserves it. Maybe it's a punishment every once in a while. But, but due process is important. I think having respect for what the state says, even though we can keep our opinions and, and do things how we, we want to do them is important as well. But I, I was with them. I'm surprised. So surprised, grateful, and looking forward to the process. Thank you.
So as Pram mentioned, as I was in the meeting at the Rec Center with you guys as we were reviewing the budget, I have had all the intention in the world of running for the, and of turning in my application in the timeframe of June 7th, or first to the 7th into it, and then posting out my, my flyers and handouts. But I, to answer your question is I, I feel like, I feel like my, my heart's there. And I feel like, no matter the outcome, what, what has happened is, is happening. It's, it's tough, but I do know that I bring a a clear mind. I bring a, you know, an understanding of how the city works already through, you know, the budgeting meetings that our attorney Brooks, Mr. Brooks runs. And I, I feel like to the 800 and to the probably 800 that will, will come into the new apartment complexes that I feel like I want them to know that I'm, I'm someone that they can trust and that I'm someone that will be mindful of their, of their concerns should I be appointed into the city council position. But as, in regards to not running, I feel like that it was, it wasn't something that was in accordance with kind of job and family at the time, but things change and, and they've changed. And here we are, and that's where I'm at. So that's how I'd answer that.
Thank you. With all respect to Ms. Merrill, she ran her campaign and there were four candidates that were presented to the citizenry of, of Riverdale. The citizens made a decision saying that these are the three that we prefer, which is no bad reflection on Ms. Merrill. But at the same time, yes, there were 845, 844 individuals that voted for Ms. Merrill. But the process is such that we can't hold another election that would say of the five present here tonight, who would you prefer? The prescribed method is what has been laid out by our legislative body for the state. And that is that the requirement is that you're at least 18 years old, that you are a resident of the City of Riverdale, that you are a registered voter, that you haven't committed any type of fraud, that you're not mentally incompetent, although my wife would contest that from time to time. But there is no other test as to votes that were missed or how close an election was. It's based upon those sets of facts, nothing with race, religion. I had the opportunity to run and had been approached by a number of residents saying, you know, we wish that you would run. And up until the last day, I was watching to see who had applied. And I didn't run because I felt that those who had from their hat and the ring represented many of the values that I, that I hoped. And I didn't want to, not that I would be a spoiler by any means, but I know that there would be people who would support me equally. And whether that would be redistributing the votes cast, you know, had I run, that could likely happen. Mr. Patard probably has many that would vote for him, Mr. Hawes as well, Mr. Evans as well. So I don't want to leave anyone out. But we all recognize and see what Ms. Merrill received in votes. But because we can't have another election, this is the prescribed manner in which we do that. And we leave it to the wise council of our city, present city council, to make that determination based on the applications and what they viewed tonight. And so I trust that you will make a good decision in, in reaching that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just say ditto? I, I agree with much of what has already been said. One thing that I would say is that this is the procedure that happens regardless of when the vacancy occurs. This vacancy is fairly unique because it happened at the, right at the very beginning. The last vacancy was not as unique and, but ultimately, the, the state has determined in their great wisdom that this is the procedure that will be used. What I would say to the people who, those 844 people who voted for Ms. Merrill, if you had had a different choice, would it have made a difference? Also, you represent all of the citizens of Riverdale, not just the, those who vote. So you are being asked to make the decision for all of the citizens of Riverdale.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, you have a second question, right?
Yes.
And we'll start with.
Okay, Mr. Patard and everybody. Now, this is your opportunity to tell the council, what should our first or primary consideration be when choosing an applicant to appoint to this council? Should we choose an applicant who will best represent the Riverdale citizens, or an applicant who has run for the city council and barely lost? Or, or is there something else that, that should be first in primary consideration?
So A, B, or C? I appreciate the option for C. I feel strongly that in making this decision, and as I, I really appreciate the last statement that was made around you representing the entire citizenship of Riverdale. And so I feel strongly that you should choose the person that you feel would round out your council well in representing the citizens of Riverdale. What that means is you probably need somebody that can provide some additional context, some additional points of view, some additional skills. While you have five great candidates right here, I believe there were six at the start, it's up to you to make the most informed decision you can based off of what you feel is most important. I would strongly encourage not doing it on personal preferences or any sort of bias, but a matter of choosing based off of what you feel is going to bring you the greatest outcome as a council and to the Riverdale citizenship and that will be informed by expertise in the way you deem it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Stevens, in, in answering your question, my, my answer to you is, is I don't always have the way to win, but I do find the way to, to win, whatever that takes. Even though if I, if I don't get elected tonight, doesn't mean that's not going to stop me from, from running in this next, this next campaign. I also feel like in the, the great, Tim Grover said it, said it best is, a lot of, Tim Grover was, was Michael Jordan and Kobe Bryant's trainer, skills trainer. And he said, there's three things that, that people are. There's cleaners, closers, and finishers. And he said, Michael Jordan and Kobe Bryant were finishers. And he referenced a, a fact in there when Kobe Bryant tore his Achilles, finishers finish whatever they do, no matter what happens to them. And Kobe Bryant tears his Achilles and then still goes out and has to shoot the two free throws and makes the two free throws and walks into the locker room. I'm saying, I'm not trying to compare myself to Kobe Bryant, but I am trying to put into context that I do consider myself a, a finisher. I finish what I start and I finish what, what, what my team is, is going for. And so that's, that's how I believe that.
Thank you. Your decision tonight, well, and I, I really think I'd go for number C, or letter C, or whatever you care to identify now. If you consider that a lot of our great decisions in society are taken with time and with study, you've had an opportunity tonight to study the five of us that are, are present. I'm not particularly likening this to passing sentence on someone who's committed a crime. But if you consider that a jury, of which you are a jury at this point, a jury takes time to sit down, to discuss, and to evaluate. It isn't something that's a snap decision. I feel confident in snap decisions 85% of the time. But I value that extra 15% of the time to sit back and say, I like this, I like this, this is great here. This could be a conflict. When we were hiring individuals where I worked, we did that as a team. It was not me. I expected our team to say, is this person going to fit well to accomplish the goals that we have at our office and for our organization? That's something that I would say, do we really need to have a decision tonight? Okay. I don't know the full statute on it, but I think that it would be wise to give time for you to consult and confer and set aside personal likes and differences and focus specifically on what each individual offers and who would be the best selection to complete the quorum for the council. Thank you.
I'll go with C as well. You have been entrusted through the process to make a decision in a way that the citizenry doesn't. When I got, when I looked at the application and started reading through the questions, I was going, man, why don't they give this to the candidates and make them fill it out and then post it on the website so that everybody can see it exactly how the candidates feel about these situations? And then, you know, why don't they have a meet the candidate night where each candidate gets, gets up in front of the, you know, a board or a group that has been selected to ask questions like this and, and record it so that the citizens can see what, how the candidates responded? Because I can tell you that I think that this process is, I mean, personally, it's a much better process than the flyers that I got in the mail. Not, not to say the flyers weren't wonderful things to read through, but I think that, that this is a unique situation that the, and I believe that this is one of the reasons why the state put this type of process into place so that you can pick someone through a much deeper dive into how their philosophies are and, and what their temperaments are and how they view things for the city and how they will work in conjunction with the current council.
Thank you.
I will say C, all the above, and ask that the council and, and the mayor comes down to this, considers both of what you presented, which is who would be the best person to fill the council seat, as well as just considering who also ran in the election. I will say that I 100% trust that you guys will make the decision that you feel is best tonight. And I hope that that's a we comment. I hope that all of us can, can trust that. So the decision that you make tonight, I will support and trust you guys to make that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, we got more, Mr. Evans?
Ram it up and still go. Yeah. Is it on me? It is. I'm just going to wing this one.
Okay.
Ready for a very honest answer on this. Are you willing to try? And how will you beat me in the next election? That's what I want to know.
So as, as I mentioned before, I don't get into something if I don't foresee myself diving all the way in and exploring all the, the avenues and, and really just pursuing what, what people want to feel is, is just being heard. And so it wouldn't be something that I would more say or campaign differently. It would just be flat out, I'm going to say, I'm, I'm going to do whatever it takes to outperform and, and out knock on the doors. When I was in Australia on my mission, that was, that was, that was it. I mean, if you wanted to find the people that were, were ready to hear, hear the message, it was, it was the amount of people you, you knocked on and, and you got that and you, and you listened to them. And to answer your question, I mean, that's what it's going to come, come down to. I mean, you're not going to be on here forever. And I'm, I'm still going to be coming at it if I'm not already, already there. But I would, I would just say that through, through my work ethic and finding ways to unite the demographic, the young, that's an increasing population in Riverdale and, and coming in, such as my family and, and even what, what we've seen in our ward, ward, but also the, the old, I would figure out a way to unite them and to be able to help them feel heard and, and find ways to be able to provide comfort in them giving you their, their vote and their trust. Thank you.
Thank you. I've known you since grade school. And even before, I have known your family and I know that you would be a most formidable vote. That said, I would look to you as an ally. I don't know that I could beat you. I don't know that I would want to be you because I value in what I have seen you do. And I know for the rest of you involved, this is not a kiss up. I know Counselor Hanson very well and I respect the decisions that you have made. And that's in honesty and not sugarcoating anything. At best, I would hope to be able to strive to run and keep up with you. And that's how I would try to compete with you is just to stay up with you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I have run. I'm a horrible candidate, I can tell you that. Campaigning was the hardest thing for me to do because I went out and knocked doors. I did. I knocked doors. I got through about five in a day because I would stop and start talking to somebody and they would have amazing things to say and I would talk with them for a long time. That's probably why I lost when I ran the second, for council the second time. I think that, I think that I would, that I bring a vast knowledge of the way that the city works. My father actually worked for Lehigh City. He was the street superintendent in Lehigh City when I was growing up. And I went to a city council one time when he was there as staff. And, you know, everybody looked at me. I was in high school and everybody, you know, they were all wondering what's going on? Are you there for, because it's an assignment from school or what? And when I got home and I was talking to my dad, I says, you know, I says, first of all, no better comedy anywhere. It was the best night out that I had had in a long time. But at the same time, I look at the people who serve and they are willing. That's what, that's the number one thing. And I am willing.
Thank you.
I would love to run again for council position to hopefully serve a full four-year term in one chunk. You are a top quality council member. There is no doubt about that, Annie. And my goal would not be to beat you, it would be to join you and to be elected together. Thank you.
So to restate the question, it was, am I willing and how would I beat you? Correct? First, yes, I'm willing and I look forward to and plan on running at the next election. I didn't this time because of extenuating circumstances. Happy to share them outside of this venue if you so are interested. Second, similar to a couple of the other answers that are mentioned, I don't have to beat you. There's three seats that are available. And I believe for public office to be done right, it needs to be done free of slander, free of name-calling, free of most of what you see in most elections that are publicly shown, which is really unfortunate. And how would I win or gain one of the three seats that is available? I would do all I could to try and encourage public discourse. Stacy mentioned the idea of this or putting up that questionnaire, putting it public is a fantastic and superior way for citizens to actually be informed on candidates that they feel could represent them well to make the right decisions for their community. And so I would do all I can to try and work with any other candidate that's willing to make open public discourse available, record it, publish it, make it public as much as possible to make the best informed decision. Thanks.
Thank you.
Last question.
Home stretch for you. And I think Mr. Hawes mentioned that the questionnaire that went out to everybody and everybody provided the comprehensive answers and questions that were asked here. I think my last question is, is there any question that you wish we would have asked but didn't? Anything that you want to tell us that we didn't ask? It's important for us to know.
That could be the question right there.
I don't know that I would want this necessarily in the format on the questionnaire because I think it's more appropriate in this type of setting. Because to communicate, there are different ways to communicate. What is written, verbal, eyes, eye contact, all of those things serve to communicate. I can tell you that I'm willing to serve and that I want to serve the citizens of this community and that I have a passion for the city of Riverdale. But you reading that only have your own personal interpretation as to what I'm trying to convey and what I'm trying to say. Hopefully, my body language will convey to you my commitment that I will serve to the best of my ability, that I will put everything within my power to stay informed, to collaborate, to be able to engage with the citizens of this community. To, you can't please everyone. This is probably one of the most difficult positions to find yourself in because everyone is going to have a different want, need, and desire. And trying to satisfy them all collectively at once is impossible. But leaving someone with the understanding that even though I wasn't able to do everything, I was able to do something and I was willing to engage with you to help you understand how this benefits all of us, that would be my willingness and commitment. How committed am I serving? Would be my question, but that's only appropriate in this kind of setting, I think. Thank you.
What got me into, into politics to begin with was that the city council changed the form of government. And I thought that that was not the greatest thing to do in the way that they did it. And I formed, well, while they were, while they were going through the process, they met many times way, way into that. There were times that I attended meetings that didn't get out until after 2:00 in the morning. I hope you never have to sit through those meetings. But ultimately, they held a public, I don't know if it was a public hearing or a public meeting. And one of the things that happened at that meeting, I was totally against what they were doing. And I got up and I told them that, that that was not the right thing to do, that they should, if that was something they wanted to do, they should put it on the ballot and let the people vote on it. A lot of other people got up and railed against the council, called them, basically called them names, really not nice. And I found myself getting up and defending the city council. Not for the decision that they were making, but for the way in which they made it. So the question that I would have asked is, would you be willing to back the other city council members in the decisions that they make? Even if you don't agree with them?
I feel like the questionnaire definitely gave us some understanding of, just like the council in general and our knowledge base when it came to just council decisions. And I wish that there was maybe just a question that could have asked something like, like who and what influences you the most in your life? Like, when you look at the research, that we're a product of what we're around and who we're around and we're a product of what influences us the most. So going on just a deeper dive, maybe just a little bit more understanding, like if I was in your position and I had those applications to look out with the questions and the answers, I would want to know more about who are these people, right? What guides them, what directs them? And we've touched on so much of that tonight, which has been great. You guys obviously came with personal questions because that's what you are seeking to know more about is us, who are we? And what makes us who we are? What guides us, what directs us? And I feel like that, that's critical and that should have definitely been a question asked, in my opinion, on who are you and what guides and directs who you are? Thank you.
Thank you.
My answer is similar to Karina's, although I had the benefit, thank you, of giving me some time so that I could write out some of my thoughts. And I found myself thinking so much about how this process could be used in the future election. And the question that I would have loved to see on this document and in a future document for future elections was the one you asked earlier. What are your values? What are your principles? And the reason I would love to see that question asked of candidates in every election is because people vote for people they trust. And people trust people that represent them well. And too often, representation of self comes in the form of age, demographic, race, creed, color, things that really don't necessarily represent the choices that are often needed to be made in a public discourse. Values supersede all of those other types of attributes. And if somebody can see and hear the values of an individual, they can understand and connect with them in a way that they feel that person can represent them well in a public situation. And so again, the question I would add is, what are the values that you hold nearest and dearest are the principles? Thank you.
So the one that I thought of was, where do you see Riverdale in 10 years? And how would you see yourself if elected to be city council member, being a part of getting Riverdale City to that point in 10 years? I feel like my optic is very, or closed off is a very real thing that happens. Someone gets appointed, it's only a two-year time anyway, you really don't have. But if we all have a collective focus on where it is that we want to be in 10 years, you mentioned the 2030 tax break. Collectively, that's what we work on is finding ways to be able to resolve that. So I would ask that maybe you do consider that. Where do you see Riverdale being in 10 years? And what do you, and if elected on the city council, what part do you see yourself implying in getting Riverdale to that?
Thank you.
I'm glad I don't have to vote. So you all have a ballot, just choose one, fold it, I'll come collect them and then I'll read them out loud and we'll see where we're at.
So.
Are we having a discussion first?
Okay, I want to say one thing real quick. I want to say a couple of things, actually. First of all, I want to thank the city council for their questions. I think they were very thoughtful. I was a little worried what they might be, to be honest. And I really want to thank you for your thoughtful questions. I absolutely want to thank the six people that took the time to fill out the questionnaire and come here for hours and answer these questions. They were hard questions. As I thought to myself, how would I answer those questions? They were hard questions and you guys did great. And I hope every one of you, I know you will replay it in your minds when you go home. Oh, I should have said this, I should have said that. Your answers were great, great answers. You are the cream of the crop here in Riverdale. I mean, my heart was just swelling as you answered the questions. I thought these people want to serve. They're so, so passionate and so good. So just, unfortunately, there's only one person that's getting chosen. And like Ms. Mariposa said, I mean, she's glad she doesn't have to vote. So please don't go beat yourselves up because you guys did so, so good tonight. And only one of you is gonna get chosen. And that doesn't mean that any of you are any lesser and shouldn't try to be on the council or participate in some way. So, but with that, it's been such a good process and so respectful. I don't want it to turn into a circus at all, but I wouldn't mind the council being able to discuss. Mr. Brooks, I'm looking for some advice from you. I don't want it to get out of hand. I don't want it to be kind of a horse trading type thing. I don't, what kind of guidance do you want to give them?
I mean, I don't know. The code's silent on it. I think you kind of have that authority depending on what you wanted and how, and if you want to get.
It has to be in an open meeting.
Right, right.
Can't be a closed session.
And I'm not, I'm not big on that because basically the comments are directed to, at the other candidate or the other council members to maybe put forth, promote your horse, if you will, or whoever you're implying to. And I'm not sure that that has a lot of purpose at this juncture.
You have a question?
Yes.
Everybody gets to answer it.
Yes, that's true.
You need to come up to the mic.
It's simply, this is where my brain starts going crazy and this is in no way an attempt to sway votes. Am I understanding correct that everybody gets a single vote? And is that standard or is that something that you get to decide? There's not like, oh, we replace it one, two, or three to get a more rounded choice?
That's how the statue plays out.
That's an interesting statue. Thank you.
You know my cousin's one of the candidates, so maybe I can't vote on this first round.
I hope you don't do that. I told her, don't do that.
One of the, who's related to who thing?
Yeah, you know, might be shady.
Okay, so does anybody else have any comments on the process of commenting? Any thoughts? Do you just want to make your vote, turn it in? I don't, I would like to comment. You would like to comment, Counselor Stevens would not like to comment.
No, no, it's all or none. I mean.
Yeah. No, I agree. I'm talking about the process. You would prefer that we don't comment. Counsel Arnold would prefer that we do. Counsel Hanson or Counsel Richard, do you have any strong feelings either way?
Well, I just, yeah, it's incredibly qualified individuals here. So from our perspective, I don't know if I make the wrong decision, to be honest with you. I don't know.
I don't have anything else to add. It was mostly so I could hear what everybody else has to say. I feel like such great candidates, I feel like I'm in an impossible position right now, to be honest.
That's great.
Okay. One of the reasons I would like you to comment is because I want you to come to a consensus so that I don't have to do a tiebreaker.
As a candidate, you're comfortable.
I don't have any.
So one comment that I would say is, Annie, I trust you to make the best decision regardless of relationship and I know you're kind of playing with that, so.
Oh, yeah, I am. Yeah, that's not really it.
Just so everyone else knows.
Yeah, just so everyone knows, that's not a real answer.
All right, so we're not gonna comment about the candidates, we're going to vote. Each of you choose one. Yes. Each of you choose one and fold it and pass it on.
Come grab them.
Okay, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to comment after for feedback for to, to the, to the folks that have presented because I think there's been some things that I'd like to share that they've done exceptionally. And I just, hopefully maybe give some positive feedback.
As long as it's positive.
We can answer some of the questions that you, they said.
Mr. Hawes, you had left, but I just wanted to tell you guys, each of you, I'm very impressed with your answers. I don't think I could have made those answers on the fly. And unfortunately, we're only picking. I feel like that's almost an impossible choice. We have such a good group of candidates. And you're kind of right, we do know a lot more about you guys than people know about us from random, so.
You could just add five.
Yeah, let's go, yeah. Go to a nine-member council. Yeah, back to court.
We need to check for the music.
No, we do not.
I can hear it already.
Absolutely not. Larry's going to wiggle out when he wins.
Like the circus again.
Hopefully not as bad as last. A vote for Karina Merrill. Do you want me to say who voted?
I think it's supposed to be.
We should.
Oh, yes.
It doesn't justify in there whether it's a secret ballot or something.
No, it doesn't stay. It is a public meeting, so we probably should.
A vote from Councilmember Richter for Karina Merrill. Vote from Councilmember Hanson for Kent Anderson. Vote for, from Councilmember Arnold for James Packard. The quarters out. And a vote from Bart Stevens, Senator Councilor Stevens, for Stacy Hawes.
So we're four-way tie.
We do.
Which actually is not surprising at all to me because I.
Because you know us.
No, because they did such a fantastic job. That's why I don't want to be the tiebreaker. Get the coins out.
So if you buy a vote, come up.
Yeah, do the done dice.
There's not a way to take a second vote on these four candidates.
Very clear that we have to look coins, huh?
It must love coins at this thing.
Yeah, they didn't like cards.
We get the card before, but they said that's like game.
It looked pretty cool with the card.
So these four quarters are all different, they all have different tells. So I'm going to give you each one. I did this in case we have a bounce and confusion. We know whose quarter is what, okay? So. Yeah, I get these back, they're steeds. I scanned them.
Are these being checked out of the city by?
Nope, right out of his drawer.
You know who has what on their coin?
I'm going to write them down here. So we have a West Virginia.
I have West Virginia. With the river gorge on it.
So we have the old-fashioned eagle.
It's like, why can't I not see it? It's like super worn and it's got a fashion eagle on the island.
It's a sight test, like that's the last question.
You should have South Dakota. Probably hard to see, but. Okay. Hold me out with this. So everybody's going to flip them at the same time. If there's one odd, so. If three of you have heads, the one has tails, that one.
Are they catching them or drafting them?
They have to be on the floor.
So like we stand a little farther apart, we just tell the lighting to be all again.
Can we go to the state after this? Just ask them to make some adjustments.
So if you're on, so if you're on the council, one of the things you'll be asked to do is go to the state.
Great.
This could be one of the things.
Maybe we should decide the presidents.
You guys should run the president. Okay, so on three, flip them, try to keep them as close.
Do they have to tell you heads or tails first?
So there might be two and two.
And we'll do it again.
Do it again, okay, do it again till it's three and one.
We're looking to get this out of these two people. Second vote, they've done, you're the odd person out. Okay? On three, flip them, try to keep them close to you and we'll see what happens. One, two, three. And that's why they're all different.
I've got tails.
I've got heads.
I've got heads.
I've got tails.
Make sure you get your same quarter.
Is it recorded on the hour?
Oh, so we're just keep, we just keep going.
Which is.
I will be your own.
A one. One, two, three. Heads.
Tails.
Tails.
Yeah, they are, yeah, this is not.
Now you'll get it.
That's thirty-six out of seventy.
One, two, three.
Tails?
Tails.
No, I'm heads.
Three tails and a head?
Yeah, yes.
Three is a head.
Okay. Who is yet? Do you feel that?
What? Are we doing? Are we all going for heads or we all going for tails?
Okay, one, two, three.
Heads. Heads.
All right.
Tails, tails. Keep it as a souvenir. So this is what we got.
Are you taking a break, Barker?
So you have to vote?
No, don't we have another round of questions?
No.
That one's low, selling with the answers when I get back.
Letting know how it turned out.
Okay, so for clarity on the record, we have Kent Anderson and Stacy Hawes are still in. So this is.
So this ballot just has a place to write a name. Has to be one of those two names. We'll have another four repack.
So if it's two and two, it's back to the quarter.
Yeah, or the mayor, the mayor can draw this one.
Writing in there.
I'm not writing it yet. The idea is that I don't have to decide.
Convenient.
Yeah. It's crazy. You don't want to override this one, cancel it.
Weren't we joking that it would do that like over and over? I thought I'm not going to speak more. You thought it would.
I was worried.
That was quite a few. The cards are faster.
Yeah, the cards are definitely faster. You have better luck with cards.
Apparently. I think it was you after the last one.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, so we're going to write one name on.
So there's, I thought we had another round of questions.
You got more questions?
I guess we could have had comments in between, we did last time, but the rest was already voted.
They've had the answer.
Oh, you already went?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you weren't here.
All right, our vote from Mr. Stevens, Stacy Hawes. Our vote from Ms. Hanson, Kent Anderson. Vote from Mr. Arnold for Kent Anderson. Vote for Mr. Richter for Stacy Hawes.
No way. Say you.
What saying?
Do you want to flip a coin to see if you're going to?
So. I honestly did not get any sleep last night because I just replayed every scenario that could happen with this. And I knew that I would be making the decision. I didn't know who the final people would be, but I just knew. And as I talked to people, since I found out that I could make a decision, they've all said, oh, just flip the coin, there's no way I would make that decision. Even the Hiltons, when I was at their house on, I don't know, I don't know, Friday night said, oh, there's no way I would do that. Just flip the coin. And as much as I want to flip the coin, I feel like that would be kind of chickening out just a little bit. I feel like it's kind of my responsibility to make a decision. But it's a hard decision. To be honest, I think either one of them would serve just fine on the council and do a great job. Any of the, like I said, any of the six that we had, were lucky to have had such good candidates. And as, as I think through the answers to the questions, I think it's important that I pick the person that I think is going to be the best fit for the council. And I think as we approach some of these upcoming challenges, I think Mr. Hawes is going to have the experience and some of the knowledge that's going to help us as we move forward. And so I think, I think he would be my choice. And that's a difficult thing to say, Mr. Anderson, because I was really hoping that you would apply for the position. And I'm glad you did. And I'm thrilled to have you continue to serve on the planning commission. If we moved you up, I would get a pick in the planning commission, which is always kind of fun. But anyway, I think, I think my choice in the tiebreaker would be Mr. Stacy Hawes.
So then.
Yeah, Mr. Stevens wants to make a couple of comments and I think we'll allow that.
Before you leave, let me just give a couple of things. That was just the depth and the breadth of experience was incredible. Now, let me tell you what guides me a little bit. A few years ago, when I, I've been involved indirectly and indirectly in city politics for over 20 years. And I wanted to run and my wife said, please don't. The kids are young, I need the help. And I already had a full-time job and a part-time job. And she, and she, so I said, okay, I won't. And I get it because there's, there's times that you, that works for you and times that it just doesn't for professional, personal, family reasons. And I get it. Because we had ten candidates, I think, last time, a few years ago. And one of the questions was, is would you be willing to do, be involved? And all of them said, yes. Well, there was nine of them and some of them were very impressive, many of them were very impressive. And I contacted them because I was trying to recruit people to run this last cycle. And every one of those people, except for Ms. Merrill, had something going on. They had a church calling, had work, they had kids, they had a new baby, whatever that prevents them. And that's, that's life, I get it. But let me just share, so when it's right for you, please get involved. Now, let me share one thing. What I finally did to get my toe in, I found a gentleman who is a political consultant. And he says, don't worry, you can't afford me, but I'll tell you once, you can do whatever you want. I don't care. I'll tell you what I tell the people to pay me. And he says, when you fill out your, your flyer, you've got to put down why you are running. That has to be a theme on your flyer or your presentation. And I didn't ask that as a question, but that's the criteria that I was looking for. Why are you running? You know, now, I'll admit, the reason why I got involved in city politics was a negative, as is most people. There was thirty-plus years ago, there was some development going on, I didn't like it. And I said, I don't like that. And they said, well, why don't you do something about it? So I did, I got involved. And that's not uncommon for being motivated by a negative. And then pretty soon you realize there's more to this than a negative. There's a lot of positives that I want to be a part of. Now, please stay involved. Home, you've got, you heard some great answers. Hopefully everybody could listen to everybody else because that one was presented was phenomenal. And so when, because when you decide to run, not this time, because I'm going to be running and you're going to run against me, possibly Ms. Hanson. But the hardest thing to do is to write about yourself. Come up with a bio and do it in under 200 words. It's excruciatingly painful, but it can be a very motivational and developmental exercise. Do it. And start now, you don't have to wait. I spent literally months, when I decided to run, I met this gentleman, he shared that with me. And I say 200 words because if you want to post your bio on the state website, it has to be at least 200 words. I couldn't get it there, so I hypotyped it, a whole bunch of stuff because that, the computer saw it as one word. Anyway, I, over time, I have matured and done it. And I've got it down to about 150-plus words to describe who I am, why I'm running and what my objectives are. If you go through that exercise, everything else will just fall in place when you go to, go to put your, pull the trigger and run. It just does, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you once again, all of you, for taking the time for your hats and the ring. I just, I respect that more than you know. The someone that's done it, I respect it, okay? So hold your heads high. Some of you lost due to luck. So anyway, thank you so much for taking the time to go ahead. All right, let's move on with this agenda because some of us haven't had dinner yet. So we're going to go ahead and swear in our new council member. Council member Stacy Hawes.
Just got to find the words. You usually have these printed out already, but I didn't know whose name you put on that, so.
Oh, and Stacy, next time we meet, we're going to do group photo, so then, you know, so.
Yeah, you're a little casual today.
Yeah, see if she still fit in the suit, I don't.
So we all are matching colors.
Bring a platform, you can stand in it.
I don't know, every time. Barely fit in the same picture.
So we'll, we'll do this now, but I'll have you sign one after I can print it on the line. So, here's your hand. You have for me. I state your name.
I, Stacy Hawes.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
That I, I do solemnly swear that I do support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office of fidelity.
And that I will discharge my duties, the duties of my office with fidelity. Thank you.
Sit down. Welcome. All right. So our next item of business is the selection of a mayor pro temp. I assume everybody's familiar with this, what that is. Actually, Councilor Victor. Familiar with.
Yeah.
So. Ms. Maroni, do you do that? Or do we do it with Mr. Brooks? Or who does that?
Um, I think you do.
Nomination and then.
Yeah. That's what we did last time. Just talk about nominations first.
And it's the council that does it all, right? Okay.
I mean, it's your assistant that you not.
I thought it was on.
No, I think we nominated last time.
Yeah. It's a vote. Yeah, it's always a vote. Any nominations for Mayor Pro Temp? Our current one is Councilor Arnold.
And I will nominate just because I believe in seniority.
Okay, of a nomination, we need a second to that.
I'll say.
Any other nominations? If there's no other nominations, I mean.
Still vote on it.
Yeah.
For him to say no.
Vote for five, say no. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, Councilor Arnold, just show the mayor pro temp. Okay, moving on. Number five, discussion and possible action concerning Riverdale Substance Abuse Court.
Mr. Brooks. I'll try and play through this. I explained a lot of this in our pre-planning meeting. It has come time to recertify our drug court. And everything's just kind of falling into place. One of the things that we've been looking at as administration, when the mayor asked me to look at everything in the city, was our drug court. Whether or not this was something the city could continue to do or should continue to do. That was one of them that was kind of on the chopping blocks anyway. But it just so happened that all this is coming together. Joan Daving, who is our drug court representative who coordinates everything, she's going to retire come July 1. And also, our court's certification expires on June 30. So all of this happens in the end of June and early July. Having said that, the more we thought about it and talked about it and discussed different things, it was kind of like, well, is this something we want to continue to do? And as Joan was making the rounds and talking to the state people, stuff that was brought to our attention, that Judge Mehmet, who's a. Judge, just like our judge here, is going to start his own in Weaver County at the same exact time. And so we got thinking, maybe it would just be best to let ours phase out. We had 10 applicants as of last month. Three of those graduated. Two more will graduate in March. So that puts us down to five people. Really, you know, when we look at programs and what kind of money we're putting into that for five people, that probably just shouldn't be done. I love the drug court program. I was part of one in Idaho before I came here, saw them from start to finish, been involved with this one as well. It is one of those things that really works compared to the revolving door of the jail down there. But it is very, I can't see as far as resources go. The drug court participants pay a lot of the services that they receive there, but we're still contributing in half of an employee. We also have a police officer that's there. Public defenders, prosecutors, I mean, all involved. There is a chunk of money we're throwing at that. And I just think it's probably more appropriate that this be run by the county. It's more of a, even though it has the criminal elements to it, it's more of a social program. Because they're trying to get these people off of substances that they've been addicted to. It's a wonderful program, but I just think that it might be better to have this in the realm of the county rather than the city. Most of the city courts in the state have gone away. We're one of the last ones that still has it. And so it would be my recommendation to the council that we cut this at this point. We can turn them over to Judge Mehmet. We will continue to run until they're up and going. But I think at this point, rather than invest more money and resources into this, it's time to let it go.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Brooks? You said the timing was working out.
That is going to be perfect.
So when when are they starting in Weaver County?
Yeah, well, they they hope to be up by July 1. So they want to do it just like we will with the new budget. And so we wouldn't be putting any more money into our budget in the next budget that's coming up, so.
Councilor Hawes, you got a question?
So technically, we'll just end it at the end of on June 30.
That's the way it's looking. If not sooner, if he got up and running sooner, we would hand him off even sooner than that. Joan could leave even earlier than than July 1, according to the state. They want to look at her as a. Person who certifies all the drug courts around the state. And they advertised for this once before and couldn't find somebody qualified. She's almost ideal for this. And so if they could get her up and going, they may even take her sooner than that. And I think she would still stay on board with this as long as she can to make sure nobody, we don't want anybody fall into the cracks. But our numbers are so low now, it's hard to justify.
So so you're just asking us for approval to wrap it up?
Yeah. Whenever. I just want to make sure you're okay with it. I think it needs to be done. But you know, where it does involve some budgetary issues there, I wanted to make sure you were aware of it. This is one where we're going to cut.
Should we get a consensus on that?
I would.
Just kind of happen up there. Everybody just give the thumbs up if you're good with that. All right.
Thank you.
unanimous. Everybody is in favor of wrapping it up. So thank you, Mr. Brooks. Move on to our last item, number six, a discussion of possible action regarding public infrastructure districts, which I don't think we're going to spend much time on.
We're not going to spend.
Get a West Bench update as well.
As we've started to look at this, this is all involving America First Development up there on West Bench. And we've been informed previously that we've been. Meeting with people. And I don't know how many meetings. We've got to keep keep them straight. Just the county commissioner alone, I was in three meetings with just last week in various capacities. But we're meeting with different groups and they're involved in all those. We we it's been a good opportunity for us. I don't think a lot of these people understood what was going on in Riverdale and. Where we're at financially. This has been a soapbox for me to be able to get the word out, the same things that we've talked about, you know, with the 2030 coming up. And in fact, Rich Taylor and I met with them just privately with the commissioners. Was that Thursday, Rich? I can't remember. And and we talked about the senior center and there's things happening there. Which we can get into later, but that was a really good meeting. But those guys had their eyes open through these meetings when they're hearing some of these stories and we're telling them. You know, we, Stacy mentioned the senior center earlier. We can't keep paying for these things. Once our money runs out, stuff like this, they had no idea that we don't get any money to help pay for our senior center from the county. And they're looking at different things about some consolidations and all this kind of stuff. When they come out and see our senior center, and you compare it to any other senior centers around here, they were shocked. And how nice that thing was and how big it was. And they were really impressed. But they had no idea the financial obligations that we faced with that thing, as is with the America First. And we we met with UDOT again in a couple of different meetings on that one about those bridges and different things. We've reached out to legislators. The one good thing is we finally got America First on board that. I told them from the get-go, you've got to throw your weight around here a little bit with these legislators, because we're just little old Riverdale. They're not going to listen to us. But you guys have some influence. And so they have been reaching out. They've had some good meetings there. I think we're going in the right direction on that. But the bottom line is, we've got to decide how much are we going to help them? Because that whole improvement up there is an America First improvement. It is not Riverdale Cities. You know, that benefits us. I'd love to see 4400 widened. I'd love to see those bridges expanded and widened, because we're going to need it. And it is going to benefit us. We'll have new water systems that will be in place. We'll have new sewer systems. So we do certainly benefit from that. But how much are we going to sink into it? Because as it stands right now today, we don't need any of that. We operate fine. But to grow and to give them the opportunity to grow like they want to, we've got to make some improvements. So how much are we going to get involved? And so we're looking at all these options. That's what the other item that I was going to talk to you about, but that's probably further down the road. We're looking at maybe even an RDA. Change in either in both funding and term. And I mean, all these things are things that we could consider. What we don't want to do is put any of this burden back on our citizens. We want to keep it where, you know, America First is either going to pay for this, or we can get some grants and different things like this, or they carry bonds and things like that. So that's what we're working on. I don't know if there's any specifics. I will bring in that presentation if you guys want to see the whole thing. Did we show you anything on that before? I've seen that thing so many times. I'm kidding.
We had Jake Tate came in. They saw the washable and the glass.
Call the American first.
Right, right, right. Boy, we keep hearing new things as we get in these meetings. Now, we've heard about two hotels potentially up there. And then on that north end, possibility of of low-income housing or warehouses even, these are newer things that we weren't aware of. There's there's that northern chunk right on 4400. That is vacant, that they don't have set plans for. But it continues to grow and expand.
Did we annex that into the city? Because that was county.
That part is is in the city. It's the part where the bridge is, where the bridge comes over on our side. That's the county. Now, here's a twist to that. The county commissioners are are almost adamant that we we annex that into the city. Do it almost makes sense. We've hesitated to do that in the past because we don't want the bridge and the obligations with it. Technically, the bridge is UDOT's, but the road would be ours if we annexed it. And the county keeps. Mr. Harvey lets me know that if we get anything out of them, it's going to come with strings attached that we annex that piece of property, and they don't want it.
It might not be a good idea for you to negotiate with.
Harvey.
I know. He's got some stuff on you.
I know. He's he and it's all lies. There's nothing true about it. But.
Mr. Brooks, could I just clarify one thing? You said on the north end, possible low-income housing?
That's what they've said.
I I heard them saying like higher density.
Modern, modern income.
Modern.
I had not ever heard them. I mean, I know I noticed, I know the exact time that they first mentioned housing and I guess. Yeah, I never heard them say.
Modern income is a buzzword to get legislative support.
Yeah, I think that's why they're doing it. But any of that stuff that went in up there would overtax our sewer system. Which is going to require us to to upgrade that whole system down 4400 to the river. So there's going to be some costs involved in this, and it's a matter of how much of that are we going to eat versus how much does America First eat? So we really need to sit down with them. And that's one of the reasons why I didn't want to present this other stuff, because I got to know exactly where they're at and how they're coming. Before we put it, we're putting in a lot of time on this thing, like a lot of time with these meetings and different things. And I think it's been productive. Like I said, not just for the West Bench thing, but for Riverdale. They they've just been surprised. They had no idea we're in the situation we're in with the 2030 and all that stuff. Everybody just kind of blows off. Same thing with, you know, our percentages on on the tax increment. We've been able to talk about that and say, this is not fair. You guys took all this money from us, but you didn't take any of our expenses. Those are still there, and they've continued to grow. And you need to change that. Their whole argument at that time was, well, all of our residents are going into Riverdale and shopping. But if you look at the money that they're getting back now from their internet sales, not all those people are coming into Riverdale anymore. A lot of them are staying home. So if they're staying home, then why are you getting a high percentage? Give us some of our money back. And and the county's actually been kind of supportive of that. They, again, had no idea this was going on. They're kind of stunned by it all. So if nothing else, we've been able to tell our story a lot. And it's we've gotten pretty positive responses, other than with UDOT. UDOT is difficult to work with. Man, that's just been a struggle. And we're just getting nowhere with it. We did get one minor concession, the bottom of the heel and a couple of little things there. I mean, they're looking at some stuff. I mean, we've got a couple of projects we're dealing with them on, but the the West Bench, they haven't been. They haven't worked with us at all on those bridges. And so that's one of the reasons why we've had to go about that for legislators, just to say, hey, you're going to do something here, kind of thing. So. I think in the end, we're going to get it done. But it's still going to be a long process. But financially to the city, the increase in property taxes up there is going to be a huge benefit to us, really big benefit. So we're excited about it. And it's going to take a while, but it'll fill a lot of those gaps that we've got floating out there. So. And it'll be nice when it's done. It's beautiful.
If we can get. Kim to put together, I mean, their presentation is pretty good.
Yeah.
But to really hone it in and then get. Senator Milner, Cal Musselman here. I think we could get him here. Katie's really supportive. But to get them here to actually see the presentation here, understand what we're dealing with. I think it would be good to be, because even even though Cal's running unopposed, he's going to be very receptive. To, you know, spending some time in a meeting here. And then Anne's usually pretty good about.
Yeah. But America First has reached out to all of them. It's everyone.
Your name mentioned there.
Rosemary.
Rosemary.
Yeah.
Also.
She's supportive of us.
She, I mean, when I talked with her the other day, man, she was.
Yeah.
She was absolutely.
Yeah, she's really.
Everybody really has, even Ogden and Roy, we've met with them. See, it affects them. We touch those borders right there. And Ogden's concerned because the airport, with their increase in their expansion, they're they're concerned that more traffic on 4400 is going to affect them. And obviously, Roy is from the roundabout on. And so they're concerned, but they they've all been supportive. Even Mayor Dandley, from Roy's been been good about things. So we're going to make things happen. That's going to look quite a bit different by the time it's done. The biggest pressing issue was those bridges, because it's on UDOT's timetable to start this fall. And we can't really, we were trying to postpone it to give us a little more time to apply for some grants and different things on that. And they're not willing to do that unless we use some pressure on them. And so that's where we're going now, because the other thing is, if we get any state funding, that's got to be done now. Our meetings with our legislators are going to be difficult for the next, you know, month and a half. I mean, it's going to be impossible really to get those in there. But we've still got to keep talking to them to see if we can't get them to do something in this legislative session, if we're going to pull any money out of there. I don't know that we will, but we'll look at some other things after the session's over. It's just we're, we just found out about this stuff like in November, some of this, you know, on these bridges and different things. So it's been very short notice for us. So we haven't been able to apply to anything, really. But we've met with a lot of those people. And so everybody's pretty positive. The county's been very positive. I mean, everything's looking good. It's just a time factor right now. We're just.
We don't get UDOT or that whole place is going to be a nightmare.
You know, they recognize it, and they've been good to listen to us. But, man, they just get set in their ways. They don't budge. It's just a funny thing. We we took in last week with our, the one we had a meeting with them, we were talking about interchange changes and all kinds of stuff that really would have made that whole West Bench completely different. And they wouldn't even, wouldn't even look at it.
As far as the bridges go, I finally just was blunt with them. I said, look, if you if you move forward or replace these two bridges exactly as they've been. And we have on record that we told you not to do that. It's it's good. Someone's someone's going to be responsible for.
Yeah.
For this mistake, five years down the road when they fail, and they're not big enough, you know. And I was just trying to get them to understand that. Slow down. Let's go 12 months, 18 months on these bridges and do them right. Let's not shove them in there this fall, the exact same size they are. I think they're understanding the bridges.
Yeah, I think they're getting there.
Well, sir.
Once they start getting subpoenaed or legislature, I think it'll change. They're just, I I think what it is, they got some federal funding.
Yeah.
And it's four bridges, because the Parker Drive Bridge was actually mentioned by some other parties sitting there. They're going to make a change on that one, which will be nice. But they've got this funding, and they've got to use it by a certain time. And so they've got those on their radar. But it's kind of like, you know, that's great, but those bridges aren't going to last three years. If if all these people and jobs come in there, you'll be redoing them again, because the one, especially the one going under 84, that's got to be wider. Is everything bottlenecks right there. And it will the other direction too, if we don't get that road widened and everything changed. So a lot of stuff going on. But just so you know. And and we'll, we can get with him and see what else he can come in there. I mean, it it sounds good. They they still want to do some commercial along the road that goes through there, different things. And I still have hopes that we can get some good stuff on that north end. I just don't know what. Again, I'm not a really big warehouse fan. That's not my top choice by any means. I prefer housing actually than I would warehouses. Because again, it comes back to that population thing, you know, if we we're not getting the commercial tax base, then we've got a population to hold on to some of that. So. It doesn't hurt us, but it does hurt us our infrastructure. But in the end, because we've even talked about a water tank up there, that would have to be funded probably by America First and maybe reverse through RDA funds or something. But it's going to improve our water system. It's going to. No, that'll that'll be on the RDA property more, most likely. But just because then we have storage capacity. And and then the sewer, because our sewer is, we we have capacity now to handle what's there. And we would have the warehouses if that heaps thing would have gone in. But anything above and beyond that, we're pretty much maxed out. So that needs to be done anyway, for the benefit of the whole city. And then, you know, it's a main line that heads right down there through 4400. So. We need it one way or another, but especially if these improvements go in, there's no question about it. So. That's that's kind of the update, what we're working on. And it's been a lot of work. Mike and I and the mayor have been in meetings like you would not believe. But it's been good. But it's been good. Any questions on any of that?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Ongoing, ongoing project for sure. Okay, we'll move on to our final section of the agenda, comments. Any comments from the city council for tonight?
Counsel Hawes. I want to thank the council for the decision that they made. I appreciate the appointment, but I also want to thank those who put their names in. It was, there were six very, very qualified candidates. And I, and I'm honored to have been up against them. Will try to do my best to serve the city as well as any of those would.
Okay, any comments from city staff for this meeting?
No, I covered those not planning meetings.
Rich is kind of sitting up like he's headed for the wagon. All right, and I, Rich, did you draw the shortest straw to beat her tonight?
This is brutal what we're beating. Yeah, I chose to be here. I'm not saying I make the best decisions.
I think we had all of our department heads online.
Yeah.
Dex and stuff. So they were all interested in how things pan out.
And I don't have any comments for this meeting either. So a motion would generally be in order. Of a motion? A second and a second. There we go. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
My phone blow a fall. They left. They didn't fix it.
It's not great. You have some space heater.
Sorry, I've been sleeping. We need to fix it.
Yeah, I know, right? That's not a rule.
Actually. Well. Pretty crazy stuff. You had a crazy.
So good.
I'll be here tomorrow. Not on that. Sounds good.
I'm going to think. Well, the electric stuff is not all right. That's a little bit of a city council. They do both.
It's just an hour. I sat over here last time. I sat a part. And then we're out of there. It's like probably one of the.
And I can't.
Get Mars bill again. Yeah. It's tired of it. Yeah.